Wait till we're on.
So, good evening. I welcome you all to the city council meeting tonight. And this is December 18th, in case anyone was wondering, as we move along so quickly in this year. And I would like to report out from the closed session. We had two closed session items and there's nothing to report out. We often have negotiations or being updated on things, and so that's why we can't report out because it's legal. And so, good evening. This evening, we think, well, here, I'm just repeating what I see. Meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. Pursuant to the Arcata Municipal Code Section 2003, while the council is in session, order and decorum shall be preserved. No person shall, by conversation, or otherwise delay or interrupt the proceedings of the council, disturb any member while speaking, or refuse to obey the orders of the council. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous during a meeting shall be forthwith barred by a presiding officer from further attendance at said meetings unless permission is granted by the majority of the council. Personal accusations or remarks directed at members of the public will be result in you losing your opportunity to comment. So now, we have the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges the lands we are located on as the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous people from the lands and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. Their acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy of narratives of settler colonialism. If you'd please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the Fatherland of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, may we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Stillman.
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Vice Mayor White is absent, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you. We have no ceremonial matters this evening, or do we have any reports from commissions or committees? But we will receive a report from the staff for the December 5th, 2024 earthquake and tsunami warning response. And that'll be with our city manager.
Yeah, I'll be co-presenting. Emily St. Corne, our environmental services director, will also be presenting and sharing a little bit more about tsunami mapping and some of the hazard communication. So, first of all, I just wanted to share with the council, you know, we had a significant 7.0 earthquake on December 5th that struck about 39 miles west of Petolia. It was really just a good reminder for the city. It was a real earthquake, but fortunately, it didn't result in a lot of damage. But it provided a good opportunity for us to think about our response and how we could plan in the event that something more damaging happened. It was also a good reminder of the earthquakes that have happened over the last couple of Decembers, in particular, the 6.4 earthquake that happened in 2022 that damaged approximately 25% of Rio Del's housing stock and resulted in a lot of damage across the county. The most significant difference is the quake on December 5th of this year is that it also triggered a tsunami warning for a large portion of the county and required many people to take action to avoid that potential hazard of a tsunami. One thing that became apparent on the response is that there was a lot of people that were unfamiliar with some of our tsunami mapping and where they needed to go for safety. And that resulted in some people leaving areas that were safe to go to higher ground and other people not knowing where they should go. And so, we thought it would be important to have this check in with the council and with the community. And we also put out a press release with some updated maps. Emily's going to share a little bit more about that in a moment. A couple of other things that happened after that incident. All of our city staff, we had a meeting immediately following the earthquake after this tsunami warning was listed, and we reflected on things that went well and things that could go, that we could stand to look at a little bit more closely in the future. Some of the things that went really well included that city staff received the warning and pretty much across the board, everybody received the warning and evacuated city facilities within the tsunami hazard zone and met at the designated meeting facility, which was City Hall. Key staff were in communication with each other quickly. We had a number of text strings that went around with department heads, and teams were organized very quickly by Environmental Services and Engineering to inspect, to look for damage to city facilities and infrastructure throughout the city. That happened very quickly. Teams went out and were able to assess. Fortunately, there was no damage that was noted as a result of the earthquake in the city, significant damage. The Arcata Police Department issued a Code Red alert to provide further information to the public of where they could assemble in a safe spot and to put out information that was initially provided by the County Office of Emergency Services. Also, communication with other local agencies happened quickly, and we were able to ascertain that there were relatively few impacts within the county and that mutual aid wasn't necessary. Many employees reported to City Hall and were prepared to assist in the event that there was damage that required a response from city employees. Some of the areas that we'll be looking at in the future that we think that we could do better is the city does have an emergency operation plan, but some of the things that we noted, that there are a lot of new people at the city that have been here within the last year or two, and that some of the folks that have responsibilities in that plan really need a little more additional time to be familiar with that plan. And so, what we're going to do is make sure that we train on that annually. We're going to have a training in the near future that will brief everybody on their roles and responsibilities, update some of the titles that do different things, where you have new people who might not have the same experience as others who used to do that in the past. We'll also be identifying alternative communication modes that we can use in case the cell phones go down. And then, we'll be running through some of the equipment and checklist to make sure that they'll have the information that people need so they can act quickly. But the big one is really just making sure that we have the familiarity with those plans. Everybody knows their roles and that we're up to speed on those plans. And so, with that, I will hand it over to Emily to talk a little bit more about the tsunami warnings and tsunami safety zones.
Sure. So, as Merritt said, and we've talked about locally and was also covered on some of the national news outlets, is there was some confusion in the community about where to go when you receive the tsunami hazard warning text. And so, what we really have learned is that the National Tsunami Center, when they sent out their warning, the granularity is not as much as we know where our tsunami zone is here. And so, they send it out by climate zones. And so, many people, if they receive that warning, could go to a map. And this map, the warning was sent to over 5 million people from Southern Oregon up to Northern California. And when you zoom in to our area around Humboldt Bay, you know, if you are in Valley West, or McKinleyville, or Fieldbrook, it may look that you are in the danger zone. And so, fortunately, or what our opportunity is, is really doing more local education with our, you know, partners at the county, all the folks involved in living on shaky ground, to provide more outlets for people to see our actual tsunami inundation maps that have been developed by the California Geological Survey. So, the city has made those maps easier to find. These are not new maps. These are the same maps that we've been doing outreach with and with our partners. But now, they're embedded in our emergency preparedness part of the website. We're sending, doing more social media. We have static maps also that you can print for businesses. On this embedded map, you can click on that area and find more of the source data from California Geological Survey, information about how to evacuate. So, we're hoping that this may be just one other easier way for people to get that information. And also, that most of Arcata is outside of the tsunami zone, really using that Samoa Boulevard, Old Arcata Road as one of those kind of main points to be north of, should you get another tsunami warning in the future.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments?
No, I just want to say that I was really close during that earthquake, and I came right over to City Hall. And I just was really appreciative of how everybody left into action. It looks like everybody was organized and was checking things out. And I think the schools did a really good job, too. And I really appreciate, you know, taking the time to make those maps easier to find because I know there was a lot of people getting in cars, when that probably was a terrible idea, and a lot of confusion. So, thank you. I appreciate this update.
Any other comments?
Yes, I would just like to suggest that maybe as councilmembers, like, we could be updated on what our roles are because we're not part of those trainings. And we don't, you know, I know sometimes it's problematic to have us all in a space together. But if we could just, you know, just know what our role should be, like, through the city manager at one of our meetings. Because, yeah.
Absolutely. And that's one of the areas that we did discuss. And the council could be really helpful in getting the message out because the council members have a lot of different avenues for getting out. And people have questions, they go to council members. So, we certainly will look to involve the council and share what that role will be.
Thank you. So, is that it? Okay, so we will go on to our next item, which is receive an update from Vero Fiber Networks on the planned projects in the city of Arcata. And Stephen Napholz, is he here? Oh, you're on Zoom.
He's on Zoom. Stephen, I'm just promoting you right now to talk.
And just real briefly, we invited Stephen to come, and we really appreciate him being here tonight. There's a lot of work that's been happening for Vero within the city of Arcata, and then, we've had some questions, concerns. And we just thought we'd take this opportunity to invite a representative from Vero to come and just remind the public of what's happening and what their project entails, you know, in response to those questions and just for general information for the public.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. I sent some slides in to share. Can I share those, or do you guys need to share those for me?
You can share your screen.
You guys able to see my screen now?
Yes.
Perfect. First off, my name is Stephen Napholz. I'm a senior project manager here at Vero Fiber Networks, based out of Colorado. That is why I'm joining you from Zoom this evening. Appreciate you guys inviting me to your meeting and letting me talk about the ongoing construction that we have going on. So, first off, a little bit about Vero. Vero was started back in 2017 with a focus on the E-rate business, which is serving schools and libraries in underserved communities. We've since grown to have over 90 school districts under our belt since 2017, and it's expanded on to other businesses as well. We have a diverse management team with decades of expertise working in fiber networks from residential business and wholesale customers. Since 2017, we've grown to have three operating companies, Vero Fiber Networks, which is who I work for, Vero Fiber Internet, which is our fiber-to-the-home company, and Glassroots Construction, who is the construction company that is working in your community today. And we are now currently operating in 22 states and over 170 markets throughout the United States. And now, I'll give you a brief project overview of what we've got going on in Arcata. So, we're in the process of constructing fiber network in all the areas in red on the map to your right. Construction is currently underway and will continue for the next several months. We're going to try to wrap it up as quickly as possible. Residences and businesses in the areas that we have deemed might be affected by construction activities will receive a flyer or a door hanger notifying them of those activities in advance. And once we're completed with construction, we're going to work as quickly as possible to clean up any messes and complete any restoration that we're required to do per the permit that we received from the city of Arcata. And if anybody has any questions, please call the number on the bottom of the flyer or the door hanger. And on the next slide here, I show an example of what one of our door hangers look like, the ones that people in Arcata should be receiving. Shouldn't look exactly like this. And you'll see on the bottom there, we've got an 800 number and an email. If you guys have any questions or concerns, I would recommend calling the number over the email for a prompt answer on those questions or concerns. And that is all I had for an update tonight.
Well, thank you very much. I know that you've been busy in Arcata, especially on Union Street this last week. And I'm glad to have a presentation from you because we have had citizens wondering what's happening, and they didn't really realize that we're getting this high-speed internet and that you're providing it for us. So, council, do you have comments?
Just that Vero did some work on this a while back in my neighborhood, right by my house, and they were very communicative and did all the things that they say that they're doing. So, it was lovely to work with them.
So, thank you, and thank you for joining us this evening. We appreciate it and for the update.
Thank you, guys. Have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you. So, the next item on our agenda is, let's go to other staff reports first before we go to council reports. Do you have any staff reports this evening?
No, just briefly. Mayor Stillman, I wanted to just give you a couple of updates. Today, we had our Arcata Homeless Services Working Group meeting with Arcata House, the county. Alex attended today, and Kimberly Space, and Community Development Director Loya. And one of the things that we've heard from the community about, they were concerned about the winter warming shelters and winter weather shelters. And so, we did talk about the city providing them support, and we talked to, there'll be announcement from Arcata House on January 15th. They're going to give an update about their activities. And then, the city has money budgeted and will be working with Arcata House to ensure those services happening, as well as the county, which will be making a contribution to those. So, if people were wondering, that is moving forward, and the city will be providing support there. One other thing that I wanted to report on briefly, too, it was really, this was my first year at the city, but for over 22 years, the city has partnered with North Coast Children's Services in coordinated efforts to bring gifts and other items to families in need that were identified by the North Coast Children's Services. And so, this is something, again, the city's done for a long time, and each department was given a list of families in need and what they needed. And those gifts were, the employees of the city made donations, and they were able to pick up those gifts, or gas cards, or grocery cards for families that they were asking for. And it was really nice to just see our entire employee base kind of reach out and help the community. And I really appreciate North Coast Children's Services for really pulling that together and for this being a longstanding tradition by the city staff.
And there's a photograph of it on the front page of the Arcata Mad River Union.
And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Shall we go to reports? I think Stacy, you should talk first because today was a very exciting time, and the Arcata High School has many good things.
Yeah, several of us attended the victory parade for the football team in one way, shape, or form. And myself and councilmember White and Matthews, we got to ride with different members of the Arcata Fire Department in the victory parade. So, congratulations to the Arcata High Football Team for being state champions. That was a very fun, fun day today. Few other things with my role at the Humboldt County Association of Governments, also known as HCOG. We are still hiring for our executive director, but that does close on the 20th of this week. So, if there's anyone interested in that, they should definitely apply. And then, we will be having an unmet transit needs hearing today at our meeting. But just wanted to let people know that if, as a representative, if you have an unmet transit need, you can always contact me through email, and I can pass that on. If you don't want to contact HCOG directly or our city directly, you can reach out to me. And then, I'll probably announce it again, but in January, if folks want to save the date, there's going to be a community workshop that's happening at Fuente Nueva. And so, there will be like a neighborhood walking audit on Wednesday, January 22nd, from 9:00 to 11:00. And I'll try to remember to get more details as that gets closer. That's it for me.
Well, thank you. I was unable to come and ride on the fire engine, but it must have been just wonderful. There must have been so much enthusiasm to be able to finally win a championship, and that's something that has not happened in years and years. So, Sarah, would you have something?
Proud Arcata High alumni. Our football team was never good when I was in high school. So, good to see that they're doing it. We had a Redwood Coast Energy Authority meeting yesterday, rescheduled due to the holiday. We had a lot of really great updates and just kind of budget adjustments for a lot of grants and just good projects that RCEA is starting on, one of which is a rural fire station solar project, solar and storage project that's happening at rural fire stations all across Humboldt County. Like, even, you know, we're talking remote parts, Bridgeville, I've never even heard of Fruitland Ridge, you know, Petolia, all the way down Soham, up to Orleans, all across the county to get solar with battery storage backup, just for, you know, increased resilience in both, you know, wildfires, as earthquakes, any emergencies that our communities are facing to be able to keep those communities online. We also had some updates on kind of the final iteration of the Rural Ren, the Rural Resilient Energy Network, which is now the Rural Ren North. It's been split after some CPUC hearings and various drama to a northern and southern region. But RCEA will act as the lead agency with, kind of coordinating with like the Mendocino County Association of Governments, Lake County, and then, what's called the Sierra Business Council, which kind of oversees like six or seven counties in the Sierra foothills. And so, we'll be kind of first starting with just basic, you know, individual energy needs for people's homes, and then, kind of ramping that up to just better resilience for communities for electrical vehicle charging, energy resilience, solar storage, all of those things. And it's a huge grant that RCEA is going to get to help kind of be the hub for, for this northern region. And then, we also had a really interesting presentation and signed on to a letter of support for a grant for a company out of Sweden called Core Power that is researching and has now created prototypes for wave energy. And so, it's kind of just like a buoy that then, you know, connects to the bottom of the ocean and follows the current of the waves. And California and Oregon coast has some of the best waves for that, you know, seasonally and throughout the year, that could provide energy and possibly be coupled with possible offshore wind projects. And so, they're looking at kind of basing this out of Newport, Oregon, but looking at how RCEA can help support them with technical assistance and just learning more about, you know, what that energy resource could look like and how it could be implemented across, you know, the coast and what that future could look like. And so, it was a really great presentation and interested to hear more about it. But, yeah, that company was called Core Power, and they're out of Sweden, so. And then, our new executive director will start on January 6th, which is very exciting. RCEA has kind of been without a functioning ED for about a year. We've been in search and figuring stuff out. So, we're excited for that. And that's all I got.
And so, would you have anything you'd like to report?
Sure, thanks. I don't know if I mentioned it at the last meeting, but I was reappointed to the Housing Economic and Community Development Committee for Cal City. So, I'll be going to my first policy meeting in January. I'm really looking forward to that. I went to the Centro de Pueblo presentation on migrants' rights on Saturday just to show my support, and it was really wonderful to be there. Not an HWA meeting this month, but I am really looking forward to kind of having spotlight shone on HWMA soon as we start kind of digging into the 13A shown on HWMA soon as we start kind of digging into the 1383. So I'm really looking forward to that, and I'm also looking forward to the menorah lighting, which is on December 25th. And, you know, it's a lovely tradition. I've been taking my kids to the menorah lighting since they were little, and now they're big, so I'm just really looking forward to that. Thank you.
And what time is that?
That's at 4:30.
At 4:30? Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to say that this Saturday, the Eureka Theater Board, which I serve on, is providing tickets for Big Brothers and Big Sisters of the North Coast, and we also, and the movie is Elf, and also Cumbra. And so I also, I went to the Arcata High School Craft Fair and was able to buy gifts. I'm wearing my earrings from there. It was really interesting to see what all the student clubs have pulled together and what they're doing. And then I attended the pre- apprenticeship training program that prepares people for careers in building trades at Jefferson School. I think some of the rest of you have, and I realize that Stacy has been there. And then Home Away from Home happened, and sometimes I can't go to that. I always order pizza, which is exciting. I understand they love pizza. And we have the Valley West Community Center survey that's going to be happening soon, and I'm hoping that we are able to have many people in Valley West area fill that survey out for seeing what they would like to have and surround a community center what they need. And we had a wonderful holiday market that was put on by the city of Arcata at the community center this weekend, and the next HTA board meeting is not until February 12th. And that's my report. So the next item on the agenda is early oral communications. The city council values your comments, and the public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. This early section of public comment is limited to 15 minutes, and speakers are limited two minutes each. And if you prefer to have full three minutes of time for your public comment, this item will be continued until the end of the meeting under item 13, where speakers are granted three minutes. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. I know it's frustrating from the speakers that were unable to do so. The council may respond to statements. There will also be time to provide public comment specific to the items when that item is reviewed by the council. So please make your way to the podium, and I'm assuming you have chosen your tickets, which you can leave on the podium if you prefer. So thank you very much. And the first speaker?
Nice to meet everybody. I want to address that the council does not see Gaza, Gaza as city business, that it is not part of how you see your roles. As I see it, you do, and you want to serve, the needs of our communities here. And maybe before last year, there wasn't an awareness of the Palestinian families that live here. But now it is imperative that this council acknowledge that Palestinian families are indeed a part of our community. Given this, how can you as council members best serve these families? Well, that's a question for you to decide, as you have listened to testimonies and pleas from a large number of individuals who know them. I don't know, but my guess is that most Palestinians in our community are reticent to speak out publicly due to the hostile and at times violent reactions they have endured. So it's important to listen to those of us who speak on their behalf. We may speak here to you in rageful or grief-inspired places through tears or yelling. Our voices come from a place of great desperation, including mine. If you watched your baby lack nourishment or die due to lack of medical supplies because Israel blocks aid into Gaza, how do you think your desperation would manifest itself? Some of your reactions might be rage, others of you might fall into silence and out of shock and powerlessness. I ask you to take in the reality that where we live does include Palestinians, and on their behalf or because of our inherent humanity as a city, to have more than a superficial conversation about helping. Figure out how we can, we can as a city, support and help them, whether it's being open to explore a sister city, support a permanent ceasefire, condemn the Israeli government for this genocide, divest of any funds with Israeli ties.
Your time is up, Pam. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, your time is up.
I timed it at home.
I know. So sorry, it's two minutes. So thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
I'm Mike Mulderig. I live at 3478 Street, and I'm here to talk in favor of a sister city with Gaza. And I want to say that nearly 40 years ago, the council made a controversial but courageous decision to support a sister city in Nicaragua, a country that was being harmed by national policy that a lot of us didn't agree with. And that, you can read the benefits of that and you can, on the website, and you can talk to lots of people who have visited there and seen all the wonderful projects. But we don't talk about how enriching it was for our community to have these people come this way, to have our people go that way. I know my daughter went to help build a basketball court, and it was a life-shaping experience for her. And for me, the most important thing that stands out was, I was a, I am a dance caller, and I was holding a dance in the 90s at the vets hall, and Rosa, the mayor, came to the hall, and she had a grand old time. And after that, she went for two weeks from party after party after party, and the final party was at Denis Real. And she says, she says to me, what's wrong with these Americans? They call these things parties. All they do is talk the whole time. And she laid out the rum, and she said, we're dancing tonight. You people take yourself too seriously, is what she's trying to tell us. We need to really open our hearts.
Thank you very much. The next person, please. Thank you.
My name is Pat Kansler. I want to apologize. Last time I was here, I sort of broke down. I'm a nurse, and what's happening in Gaza is really upsetting to me, so I just, I'm just going to read this. I'd like to make the point that if the people who hear me or are worried about anti-Jewishness, that pro-Palestinian people are not to blame. And the reason why we are here is because a lot of the Palestinian people in the community, as he said, have been attacked. But pro-Palestinian, pro-Palestinian people are very peaceful. The actions of Israel, which includes genocide, starvation, bombing, ethnic cleansing of Palestine, and now the bombing of Lebanon and Syria and their land grabs, show imperialistic tendencies which will make a pariah out of Israel and a pariah out of us. So if you're afraid that something is going to happen to us, it will, because these people hate us now. The people in Syria, the people in Gaza, the people in the Middle East, not the leaders, the leaders are political, but the people, they hate us, and they hate Israel. And if something bad is going to happen, another Twin Towers or something like that, it's because they hate us. But if we, as a community, come together with a sister city or something like that, we're actually showing peace and love to these people. So I'm just, I just want to say that to people who say, leave the Middle East in the Middle East or something like that, the US is sticking its fingers in everything, and we can't, we have to be involved now. Please, stop the money for war, and maybe people won't hate us as much. Maybe have a sister city, because, like I said, it's peace and love, and we've got to show that. And my time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Williams, and I'm a long-term resident of Arcata. The summer after I finished my graduate degree in theology, I worked on an archaeological dig in biblical Palestine. Our research field camp was established in a courtyard of a Crusader's castle. We rose each morning to the call to prayer. We ate traditional foods, pita, hummus, babaganous, locally grown oranges and pistachios. During the day, working together with Jordanian experts and local Bedouins, we excavated an early Bronze Age city. While a kilometer away, a team from the Smithsonian excavated shaft tombs and a charnel house where nomads 5,000 years ago buried their dead. Cultures are made up of their collective memories, the artifacts of their physical history, their cosmologies, festivals, languages, songs, poems, recipes, and so much more. The use of military weapons destroys cultures. Today, we are witnessing in Gaza the intentional destruction of a culture. We can livestream the deaths of the descendants of nomads, of the woman whose kitchen we unearthed. We can see the olive groves uprooted and the places of worship blown up. The schools, museums, cafes, and poetry readings obliterated. As a sister city, we, the people of Arcata, can express our humanity. We can show our immediate concern for the lives of the people of Gaza, and through expressing our urgent concern for them, we extend our interest in preserving and learning more about their culture and sharing our own through the love, concern, and hospitality of sister for sister.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Thank you, guys, very much for allowing me this time to address you. It's a great honor, and I want to welcome our new mayor to the seat. I'm sure you will be a good mayor, and I certainly wish the best for your time as a mayor. I certainly hope that you will also help usher in a sister city in Palestine. And so you have a lot riding on your shoulders, I'm sure, and we look forward to working with you towards creating a sister city in Arcata with Palestine. So I want to say something about timing. Certainly, a sister city will take time to build, to grow, and it took time for us to pass a ceasefire here in this community for, against the war in Palestine. Now, certainly, you know, city planning takes a lot of time. I mean, it takes many years sometimes to do some of the plans that the city puts forward. So I think it's important to be patient with each other as we go through this process together and recognize that. It's also important that there is a sense of urgency because of the situation that we see unfolding in Palestine. Israel is targeting tent cities again and again and again. Israel is targeting hospitals again and again and again. Israel is targeting medical response teams again and again and again. Israel is targeting schools again and again and again. This is genocide unfolding in front of us. These are clear crimes against humanity, violations of the laws of war, and acts of genocide. Who can support these actions in their right mind?
Thank you, Sean. Thank you very much. So is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening during oral communications? I'm going to just say, the oral communications, you can come up there. When we started this many years ago, when I was on the council, we took oral communications to begin. It was before we had Zoom. And so tonight, I'm going to take oral communications from you all here, and then we'll go to Zoom at the end of the meeting.
I'd just like to point out, he has the three that is actually not an alternate. I don't know how that happened.
I know these cards are different than what I-
So he actually has the original three?
Well, anyway, would you like to start, sir?
Yes. I always thought, like, I mean, I'm 53. I was born in Fullerton, California. I lived in Arcata maybe 12 years. I have a brother in Eureka that's lived here like 45, 50 years. He's got a boat on, the oldest boat on, with the island. And I, the Israel and Mexico and the United States and the voting, the blood, you know, giving blood, and the, all that's happened to it with September 11th aftermath of all that, how it kind of got lawless, everything went haywire off the hook, and it just got more turmoil and more commotion and the United Nations. And I feel that the, all the political parties and all the presidents and all the world leadership communicate a little better. And if Israel and India is our allies, that there should be friend, you know, peaceful, peaceful communication consistently, not just send a president over every two years or whatever. And the homeless situation, well, the Indians, from what I understand from going to Jamestown with my uncle Larry, that took me to the top of the World Trade Center, that was a master sergeant and was in Pearl Harbor and Purple Heart, whatever. Okay, he, that idea, I mean, the-
I'm sorry.
Well, okay, well, the Indians basically, you know, know what they're doing with-
Thank you very much, sir.
With the way-
Okay. Would you like to speak?
Good question. Will we have an opportunity to weigh in person towards the end of the meeting like we normally do for the three minutes?
Yes, if you'd like to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just quickly say one thing, Alex? I had the opportunity to listen into a phone call that some community members put together with somebody that was involved in the inception of the Nautilus Sister City. And it answered a lot of questions and was very enlightening. It also, you know, created a lot more questions, of course, too. But what really brought, you know, to the forefront of my mind is, of course, the importance of international cultural exchange, but also that we can be working with other cities in the United States that have similar ideals as we do and support similar things that we as Arcata want to see. And I think the opportunity for being able to collaborate, you know, with other cities within our own country that are pushing things forward is also something valuable to look at, so.
Okay, thank you. So we will go on to items on the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar considered to be routine by the city council are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is to be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of December 4th, 2024. B, the biweekly report on dispersments. C, one, adopt resolution number 245-23, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata amending the class and pay resolution, Arcata Police Association. And two, adopt resolution number 245-24, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata amending the class and pay resolution, International Union of Operating Engineers, Local Number Three. Would any of the council members or staff like to remove anything from the agenda? If not, may we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I will second that.
Okay, thank you. And maybe I'll say yes if we agree. Aye, if we-
Public comment.
Oh, public comment? Does anyone have this for public comment? I see no one jumping up, so all those in favor, signal one.
I'm sorry, I do see a hand on Zoom.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Sarai, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I'm super confused, super confused right now. Are we responding to public comments now? Like, was that 15, was that 15 minutes? And so now we're moving it to Zoom after? And then, so I wonder, yeah, I wonder about the accessibility of that. I wonder about-
So are you, are you calling in to speak about the approval of the minutes or the biweekly dispersments or the adopted resolutions?
Yeah, because I'm super confused about the process. So in order to like have the minutes go forward, in order to have like the consent calendar go forward, I would just like to comment on the clarity of the process and the clarity of the calendar that we have, because you made several changes just then in the beginning of the meeting that we haven't seen before, like we haven't really talked about- about. So, yeah, I definitely want to comment on the consent calendar, absolutely. And if I could finish, that would be awesome. And if you could restart my time for interrupting me, that would be awesome. Yeah, so starting over, I just want to just, like, call out super quickly, and I wish I had the ability to call in right now, because I was super moved and super warmed, like, to hear all of the excitement over the events, like, you know, all the new things coming to Arcata, all the plans, like, it does genuinely excite me to hear about city planning. Like, I am genuinely interested in the issues. However, when we have things that go on, like, quick process changes, we have, you know, not even mentioning the, at the end of the last meeting, you yourself, the new mayor, talking about how you wish you could be scrolling around on a computer.
Oh, my goodness, is this for, is this for-
Wait, these are all issues that are really destructive to the process of the meeting. So when you have something like voting on a consent calendar of things that are on the agenda after you've made significant changes to the process of the meeting, in addition to making an outrageous, outrageous, like, misstep in the last meeting, I just want to call up and call attention to the ways that folks' anger and decorum and tact has been called into question and the ways that our passion and things has been misconstrued, and talk about the reasons and the ways that that relates to the process of the meeting.
So I'm assuming, so-
Entire job, the city, the equity manager's entire job could be to talk to you guys about process. And I, that's unfortunate for them, because there's real work to do. There's real work to do. There's real things to get on in the calendar, but we can't get there because y'all stay changing the rules. You stay chang-
Thank you very much for your comments on the consent calendar. And so is anyone else wishing to speak on the consent calendar? Okay, can we have a motion to approve? Oh, Joanne.
Yeah, I'm, my name's Joanne McGary, and I'm a little confused by what's going on at this meeting. It's a little bit different than how it's been. So wait, so I'm going to talk about the minutes, and I just wanted to suggest that the minutes of the last meeting, when I'm reading them, and again, it's changed the process from previous times where what I talk about has been reduced, which is understandable to just Joanne McGary spoke at public comment without talking about what I spoke about, and that people should go to watch the YouTube or the recording of the meeting to find out what I talked about. I understand that. That's all fine and good, but I'd like it to be mentioned in the minutes that people can do that if they want to know what the person spoke about. I understand you don't need to write it in the minutes what I spoke about, but let people know they can have a way to go and look at what people spoke about. That's what I would like to see in the minutes, the printed minutes.
Thank you. Okay, so, may we have a motion? We have a motion on the floor. May we all vote yes or no?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. So we'll go on to old business, and that is adopt resolution number 245-21, authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration for implementation of a local transaction and use tax. And adopt resolution number 245-22, authorizing examination of sales and transaction use tax Can we please have a staff report from our finance director? Thank you.
Yes, good evening. So this is a pretty straightforward item of business. With the passage of Measure H and your confirming the election results at your last special meeting, we now need to take a couple steps to ensure that we can administer, we have administration collection and reporting of those additional revenues. And the state agency that is given the authority to administer those processes is the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. And so you have a resolution 245-21 this evening, which essentially, as you mentioned in your summary, authorizes the city manager to execute two different agreements. One is a preparatory agreement to get ready to administer that, that transaction and use, transactions and use tax. And the second one is actually an administrative agreement for the actual administration of Measure H and its collections. The second resolution is 245-22, and this essentially names certain city officials who have access to review and examine the tax records and documents that are associated with collection of that transaction and use tax. And there's a number of city business reasons for that. So it allows us to administer the revenues, oversee collections. It's also useful for economic development and community monitoring. And then we use it also in conjunction with administering our business license program. And so I'm happy to answer any questions about either of the resolutions or the agreements.
Does the council have any questions that they'd like to ask our finance director? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone? Okay, so, thank you very much for your presentation. And so at this time, we should have a motion to approve.
Sure. So I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 245-21, authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration for the implementation of a local transactions and use tax, and adopt resolution number 245-22, authorizing examination of sales or transactions and use tax records.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Then let's call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for your time this evening. So under new business, we're going to be conducting a public hearing to receive input regarding unmet transit needs and direct staff to forward all comments to Humboldt County Association of Governments. May we have a staff report, please, from our city engineer?
Good evening, mayor and council members. Item in front of you today is the public, our annual public hearing for the unmet transit needs. Over the years, we have partnered with HCOG to do this process, and today we have Michelle Nelson from HCOG, who will be doing a quick presentation on the process of unmet transit needs. So here she is.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm the contract planner for HCOG and here to do unmet transit needs. Your, my last public hearing, so saving the best for last. But the public comment period is open until the end of the year through December 31, and we welcome all public input, whether it's through this evening, emailing comments, as council member Atkins Salazar suggested, folks who may feel uncomfortable, they could forward comments they may have on the unmet, unmet transit needs. So what's asked this evening is following my presentation, is to open the public hearing and to allow members of the public in person or on Zoom to give testimony and then to close the public hearing, and then we'll take that input and move that forward. So, and all input is valuable, whether it may not be an unmet transit need, because there are some standards for that, but nonetheless, it could be information that is valuable to support grant applications to document needs, transit needs, you know, infrastructure, service, that sort of thing. So we welcome all input. Let me see if I can hit the right button here. Yay. So just briefly, an overview of the process. It's part of the Transportation Development Act, which is a state, state law that provides funding for transit. And just basically, an unmet transit need is public, a public transportation need that is not being met by the current transportation system. This process identifies adequacy of the existing transportation services, and locally, the process involves these public hearings, and we do have an online survey in English and Spanish and receiving comments like Graham just mentioned. So more, a little more specifically, what an unmet transit, what unmet transit needs are, requested trips from resident, from residents who do not have access to transportation or specialized transportation or private transportation services, or requested trips from residents who do not have the resources to travel to their job, to, to school, recreation, shopping, medical appointments, all those sort of things. It could also be transportation that's, that's proposed as part of an adopted transportation plan, and then that there's sufficient broad-based community support, which means that the persons who will most likely use that service regularly have demonstrated support. Should I set up? So, can I keep doing this? It's just the same. So both the, so unmet transit need is, you know, taking the input that we receive, evaluating is that an unmet transit need, and then also then evaluating whether it's reasonable to meet. And both of these definitions, they originate out of the Transportation Development Act. There is some allowance in state law for a local definition to, to reflect local conditions, but ultimately does need to be consistent. And both of these definitions were considered by the HCOG board in December of last year. So they're, they're fairly new, or fairly, they were revisited fairly recently. So reasonable to meet criteria, so the service must be operationally feasible and financially sustainable, which translates into adequate roadways and must be safe to operate, that there's sufficient funding available from identified sources to cover the marginal operating costs for at least three years. The service must be projected to meet minimum marginal fare box return ratio of 10% within two years. This, for services that were launched as part of this process, this standard has been paused during COVID. There is some possibility at the state, they may revisit this standard, either to bring it back on, maybe to roll that back a little bit. If folks are interested in giving, advocating for reducing that or eliminating that standard, we can provide some contact information. So we just heard, had some questions about that. You can't compare transit needs with those for streets and roads, and the performance of the service must, that is implemented, is regularly valued, evaluated after launch the first few years of service. There is an expectation that once a new service is launched, it's not going to immediately be flooded with new riders, but to make sure there's some performance metrics that are being met. So this just gives kind of an overview of the process. This is an annual process. So we're obviously in the, the public comment period now. At the close of that process, the period at the end of the year, we're going to compile all those comments and then confer with the transit service providers, and then there'll be a draft report prepared. Ultimately, it's going to go to the Social Services Technical Advisory Council, that is a council that advises the HCOG board. They're going to evaluate those unmet transit needs and the reasonable to meet criteria and provide a recommendation to the board, and that's in a report that will go to the HCOG board in May, about May of next year. So we do hear some frequent, these are some frequent comments that we heard. There are known transit needs, and some, there is progress being made on these with HTA has gotten some funding for, to facilitate more frequent service. Earlier and later service during the weekdays, we do hear the need for Sunday service on RTS and then later, later night service on Friday and Saturday between Eureka and Arcade. So those are commonly heard themes in this process over the years. So the next couple of slides just give an overview of ridership on the lines. So this first slide shows RTS, ETS. The far left shows just before the fiscal year 2019, 2020, and then over time to the most recent, end of the most recent fiscal year of 2023, 2024. And it shows, you know, the ridership has been increasing over time, but it's still, in many cases, hasn't totally returned back to where it was at. And this is, this is the same information, just the smaller lines. So on the far left is the Sunbolt, Southern Humboldt Line, Willow Creek, and Dial-A-Ride. And then we see in the middle here, the total passenger trips in this most recent fiscal year. The reason I check, the thought is as to why they're, you know, where did all the riders go from HTA general manager, is that there's still online teaching, so students are still able to take their classes online. And then another reason ridership hasn't bounced back is that there's also hybrid working. So the numbers generally are improving, but still the ridership hasn't caught up to pre-pandemic levels. Willow Creek, the reason they are up is they are, students in Willow Creek are taking the bus from Willow Creek to Arcata High. So that's why they're, they are showing, they're actually over what they, their ridership levels. And this shows similar data just over a longer span of time, so that, and the trend line, you know, it's continuing to grow, but the most recent fiscal year, the ridership was change, increase was 8% as opposed to from 2022 to 2023 was 24%. And HTA is the Humboldt Transit Authority, so sorry for the acronyms. Try to fill those in. Arcata Mad River Transit System, similar data, type of data showing, again, increase in ridership, 29%. And the bottom red line that you can see there is Humboldt State Cal Poly enrollment has stayed pretty much flat, so ridership is still increasing, although student enrollment has not moved very much. So just a few highlights of Humboldt Transit Authority's kind of programs and changes that are in progress or have been implemented. They're adding hydrogen fueling, hydrogen fueling station, hydrogen buses. They are working on the development of a capital project to develop an intermodal transit center in Eureka. They received a grant in late this year, well, October, about October is when they released the press release. Then that will allow them to expand their fleet of lower emission vehicles, improve transit information for riders, so have more real-time information for arrivals and departures of buses, and increase frequency of service. So going back to that earlier slide about McKinleyville and the corridor, and so there's, there's things, there's more improvements coming, coming online. Some of the things that have happened, unified branding and fares, you've probably seen the Ride Humboldt. Fares are, for the HTA lines are $2. There are, they do still have their discounts for eligible folks. They have tap-to-pay on, on their buses, and they have a flex rider program that was a pilot project for the Humboldt, Greater Humboldt Bay Area, it's microtransit, using the Dial-A-Ride van. So overall, programs to make it easier for riders to transfer between their lines, but also to choose transit. And then another service that was launched by Humboldt Transit Authority is the North State Express Route 101. It launched early this year. It allows riders to connect down to Ukiah, and then also then to connect down into the Bay Area with, using the Mendocino Lines and going, going south and further connecting to transportation opportunities, then going north, connecting up to Crescent City, and some lines into Redding, a line into Redding. Ultimately, the goal of these longer routes is to have times, ride times that are fairly comparable to private transportation to make, encourage people to ride, ride them, and to give people more opportunity to see parts of the community, connect with folks, and just ride transit. So if, if the council or members of the public and Zoom or whatnot want, have questions or like to provide input, so this slide gives our email address and also our phone number. And then if people are interested in taking- And then if people are interested in taking the online survey, which we would love, we have it in English and Spanish, and this is the URL and QR code. So that is the, my presentation.
Well, thank you for your presentation. First, I'd like to see if any of the council members have any questions for you? Yes?
Thank you, Michelle. I was wondering when you, you mentioned some of the things that are commonly asked for, like later services or Sunday service. But would you still, if folks haven't expressed a desire and want those, should they still express those?
Yes, definitely. We still want to hear, hear that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, now I'd like to take public comment on this. Would you please come forward? Thank you. And if there's anyone else, would you like to please come forward and stand up here so we can move along tonight? Thank you very much. Okay.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary. And Michelle and I know each other well because this is going to be my third input at a public meeting for unmet transit needs. As many of you know, I deliberately gave up my car in May and have been living car-free for about a year and a half. And I kind of consider myself an early explorer of the future of what transit might be in our community, in our greater region. And I want to just add to what I've always, already shared at other public hearings about the unmet need. I was just reading a newspaper before the meeting started today, and it's either the lumberjack or El Leno or, but about Humboldt having the highest rate of drunk drivers. And one of the reasons I don't travel at night, long distances on highways and such, especially on New Year's Eves and St. Patrick's Days and things like that, is because I don't feel safe on the road. And when I lived in Santa Barbara, there was something called Bill's Bus. And it started in Isla Vista, a graduate from UCSB, and he created a bus and he picked all the people up in Isla Vista, took them down to State Street in downtown Santa Barbara. They could enjoy themselves and, and you know what I mean about enjoying themselves. And then they could get back on Bill's Bus and be driven home. And, you know, I know there's taxi services available for that kind of thing, but I think the more we promote collective travel, for whatever reason, to destinations like bars and restaurants and plays, theater, you know, events, where I really wanted the Sarah Beralis concert that happened at Halverson to be a car-free event and everybody come there on buses, but that didn't happen. But the next time she comes, I'm going to try and work that out. But we really need to get out of our cars and we need to incentivize the beauty of collectively going someplace. And there's even a cost savings and so many other things. So Michelle knows some of the other things I had mentioned about, which are, you know, common things for a lot of people, but we really got to consider the future in promoting and promoting, doing this together, going together, not individually in our individual vehicles. So Bill's Bus in Humboldt County.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jenna and I have lived in Arcata for almost 10 years. This last year, my household became a single-car household, kind of out of financial necessity. So I've been exploring a lot of other forms of transit and the bus services being one of those. Thank you for holding this hearing. I've been looking forward to it ever since it was posted. It's good to see all of the known issues that were already on the slideshow, a lot of them very common, just increasing frequency. Something that I noticed on the slide, on the presentation was increase of, or having Sunday service for RTS, but I think it'd also be great to look at possibilities for Sunday service with the Arcata-Mad River Transit System. And I would love to look at, especially after seeing the numbers with the Cal Poly students kind of flatlining, but ridership increasing, I think it would be really great to perhaps not have winter breaks for the Arcata Marsh-Redwood Transit Service. I think, I just saw a post recently that they will be going into winter hours. So there'll be minimize, or decreased service. So I think that would be something great to look at, especially seeing that the enrollment has not really decreased ridership. And the one other thing that I would like to point out is I think it'd be great to increase service to South Arcata. I did the SAM-SIP walk earlier this year and as far as I know, there's no bus service that goes down onto South G Street. I do work off South G Street, so this is obviously an individual issue, but I think it can be tied in with a lot of other transit issues. Using the Transit App to calculate the time it would take for me to get to work from my home, it would take 49 minutes to take the bus and only 50, 50 minutes to walk. So it'd only take one more minute for me to walk the entire distance than it would for me to take the bus. I frequently bike to work, so I appreciate the focus on active transport in Arcata, but I think increasing ridership and increasing frequency is really something we need to look towards because sometimes not everyone is able to ride a bike or able to walk to work. So I would love to see maybe tied in with future SAM-SIP or completion of the Bay Trail, some increased ridership and service over onto South Arcata. Thank you all and I appreciate your time.
And thank you very much. Next, please.
I'm Mike Mulderick and I don't use the bus very often. Once in a while, I use it to go drop my, a vehicle off at a mechanic and come back. And this last time, I was really taken aback at how inaccessible the shelters were along Fifth, Fifth Street, I believe, going northbound, northbound. They were all used as homeless shelters, which we need more of. And so it was just, I don't know, I think a lot of people would be really discouraged to ride in that situation because some of the people also were not at all pleasant, but that comes with the territory, I guess. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening that's in the audience on transit needs?
Yeah.
Trent, please do, sir.
Richard Jeremy Niedem. I've lived in Humboldt County 25 years. And I've been from Scotia to Trinidad. I've been stuck out in Trinidad before. You know, I've, I had my problems, I had my issues and I had my troubles and stuff, you know. I had, a lot of things had to change before I could really like think for myself, you make, you know, stand up for myself and speak for myself in a, in a, in a, in a normal way. So, so anyway, the, yeah, the transit system, I think the homeless, the homelessness in the transit system, somehow there's got to be some kind of connection with this, this camping, the people can't, outside that aren't getting connected mentally with what's going on, how to get on a bus and like get somewhere where it's like a little bit better than being outside in the dark, you know, where your clothes are just going to get ruined or you're just going to like have a hard time with something, something out there and, or lose your stuff or get, you know, have some trouble or, yeah, I don't know, just anything can happen. I, I don't know. I mean, like, it's no fun being scared or like not knowing what you're going to do and how you're going to like get through it and stuff. So, and any of the kinds of weather or natural disasters or acts of God, any of that. So I, I don't know, something, some kind of connection between the, being a transient inmate at a jail or whatever your problem is and getting on the bus, figuring that out. I don't know, some kind of help with housing when you walk out through visiting, that's my suggestion.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on unmet transit needs? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, my name is Kelsey Martin. I'm with the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities, or otherwise known as CRTP. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity for me to share my thoughts on the unmet transit needs in our region. I would just like to highlight a few areas where we have seen some trends when communicating with local transit riders. So the first one is more rapid transportation between towns. There's a pressing need for faster and more direct transportation options between towns. Currently, travel between town takes far too long due to inefficient routes and long wait times. More rapid service, such as express routes or faster connections, would significantly improve accessibility for residents, you know, who commute for work, education and essential services. The second thing is better weekend hours. Not everybody works Monday through Friday and weekend service is especially important for those who need to travel for work, medical appointments and other essential activities. Expanding service hours on weekends would provide greater mobility for residents who have non-traditional schedules. And then my third and final thing is more frequent service. So there's a clear need for more frequent buses, particularly during peak travel times. There's long gaps between buses that leave riders with limited options and many times people are forced to wait longer than what's convenient. And then increasing the frequency of buses, especially on popular routes, would make public transportation a more reliable option for everyone. Addressing these unmet transit needs would improve mobility, reduce reliance on personal vehicles, and help make public transportation a more viable option for all members of our community. I strongly urge you to consider these issues when planning for future transit services. Thank you for your time and attention to these important matters.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
No, there's not.
Thank you. So any more council comments after a public comment or hearing anyone?
I would just like to echo what Kelsey said because those were a lot of the things that I had written down that I've heard from folks and just, when I did the week without driving too, I talked to like a lot of CR students trying to make their way back to Arcata and having more, yeah, express routes for students, especially CR, Cal Poly Humboldt, but other popular, you know, destinations, like where you're trying to get there, like the airport, for example. And just that we've seen a lot of success with that green and gold route. And so, you know, to have similar, more frequent bus service to those areas that can get you there quickly is, I think, really important. And then the, one of the speakers addressed South G not having bus service. And then another area, kind of within Arcata's jurisdiction, that I've heard a lot about of people wishing that there was service is out to Bayside. And yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, we did have service in Bayside and I, so there's a period of time that they run a service and if they don't have any ridership or ridership of a certain number of people, then they can't continue it. And so possibly Bayside, when we have more development out there, we may be able to do something. So when we have a development across the street from the Jacoba Creek School, that may add to the possibility of having Bayside once again be considered. So I thank you very much. And with that, we can, we've put, that's, we'll have to, any final comments and then is there a motion? I don't think we need a motion from, I don't know what we've motioned on. Okay, nothing. There, there, thank you for that. So we're going to go on now to oral communications and written communications. Do we have any written communications? What's going to start with that first? Any written communications? Okay. Oral communications, the council values your comments and the public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Speakers will be, wherever that went, just a second. Will be allowed, allocated three minutes each. And please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements. So if you are in person and wanting to give public comment, would you please come forward? Thank you.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary. I do come to most of the meetings and I plan to attend many meetings in the new year. I do really hope more and more people will make a resolution for 2025 to participate in these civic matters in person, hopefully, at least sometimes, and then online. I do think that some of us were surprised by the new language that the mayor read at the beginning of the meeting, and I would hope that that language would be printed out perhaps so that when people come to these meetings or it's available online, we know what is expected of all of us in the room, all of us in the room. And I just think that's really important. Speaking of printed out, we did have a printed out land acknowledgement and I know some construction was taking place. And I would have hoped that that land acknowledgement could have stayed up during the construction, but I hope we can put it back up. And maybe we could put up some information. People come in here all the time to pay their bills. And, you know, I want this to be the people's city hall. And so when they're here, maybe it would be nice to have those proclamations and the ceremonial matters that apparently were supposed to have available for the public for a year's time framed and on the walls or somehow present so that people know what's happening in these, in the hall of, of the city. And, and the types of proclamations, including the one that was a reaffirmation of the, reaffirmation of the 2016 proclamation, resolution. I also think, and I've asked this, I think it's really important, especially for people zooming in, to be able to see all of you on the dais when I'm speaking here. I don't need the full screen. I don't want the full screen. I want the people paying attention to the city council meeting to see you paying attention to the public speakers. So I, we did that on the November 15th meeting or the March 6th meeting, one of those meetings, we had me and you together on the screen. And that would help people calling in know how much time they have left as well, because they sometimes cannot be aware of their time limitations. And having it visible, with you visible behind that timer while people are talking here at the podium. My final thing is just to remind us the triangle, the power of three. We have staff, we have elected officials, and we have the public. We are all vitally important and equally important. And I sometimes consider this the strongest place to stand in this room. And I want to be respected as a public member for that.
Thank you. Next, please. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Sam Neworth. I wanted to speak in support of a sister city with Palestine. Ultimately, I think there's a lot of despair and fear. And a sister city is about hope and healing. It's not going to be perfect and it's going to be hard, but the, the way to stop a suicide bomber is not to starve them or hate them, but it's to reach out to their community and show them that someone cares. So there are kids that watched their mom die in front of them when they were three years old. And then they were starving, or they are starving. And what choice do they have but to hate? So if we can show them that we're not all their enemies, we, we can learn something from them, they can have a chance to heal. When the Sandinistas were in power and the Sister City Project started between Arcata and Nicaragua, the Sandinistas were the enemy of our government. We were funding revolutionary right-wingers against the elected government of Nicaragua. That's when the Sister City Project was started. They were our official enemy. A lot of the narratives we have are lies and we figure it out later. Weapons of mass destruction in Iraq. For a year, we were hammered with that. The Secretary of, no, not the Secretary, the, Colin Powell, the Secretary of Defense, went on TV and said, there's unequivocally weapons of mass destruction and we have to attack Iraq. That was the whole reason. That was hammered into us, just like right now, Hamas, 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 Hamas. And I'm not saying Hamas didn't do horrible things, but I'm saying we are being groomed for hate and the Sister City Project grooms for healing. So change is not going to come by maintaining fear and enemies. Change is only going to come from taking a chance on, on hope, hope and healing. Change is only going to come from taking a chance on, on hope, hope and healing. It's a chance, you have to take it. There's no choice. If you go in the other direction, you're building suicide bombers. You're guaranteeing suicide bombers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, council members. My name's Tricia Murphy, and I'm here to voice my strong support that we do a sister city with Gaza. I echo some of the things that Sam said. I would, would love to see us try to extend the hand of friendship and goodwill to the people of Gaza. I don't know if people are aware, but there is, there's mass murder happening in Gaza. I don't know if people know, but there's about 128 trillion cubic feet of gas under, under northern Gaza. And Israel wants that gas. Besides the land, they want the gas. And so it's not only a land grab and ethnic cleansing, but there's, there's some other things that factor into that. Sorry, I'm, I'm having a hard time following my notes here. So I would really like to see us do this. There were some people that were speaking out last week. One of the call-in people said that why does this, why should the city of Arcata get involved with something that's over there in the Middle East? We don't know anything about it. And in essence, they were saying, we don't, we don't understand it, so we should just stay out of it. And my, my response to that is, we are involved in the Middle East. We are funding this genocide. Eighty percent of the bombs and the money that they need to do this, to carry this out, comes from the United States. And we're making enemies in the process. We're, we're killing people. This is not a war, it's a slaughter. There was a day, two Saturdays ago, I think they killed 500 people. They're, they're bombing, they're dropping 2,000 bombs on people living in tents that were refugees from, from the Nakba in 1948. The media has lulled us into thinking this is okay, it's not okay. And the only thing we can do is go from the ground up, from a roots-up approach to this and try to fight against this. We can't change what the media is saying. We can't change what our leaders are doing. I don't know if people know this, but you're, you're registered to vote if you're of fighting age. You're, if you have boys that are, that are fighting age, they are already registered to vote. They changed legislation for that. There's been a plan to take out these seven, seven cities or countries in the Middle East, and it's Israel's plan for Greater Israel. And we're doing the bidding, and we're neglecting our people at home. They just are passing legislation that we pay for the IDF, for Israel's army's benefits.
Thank you very much.
The United States is going to pay for Israel's army's benefits.
So thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone on Zoom this evening? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you, didn't you?
Yeah.
Pardon me?
I just wanted to say that the...
I think you already spoke, sir. I, you, you already stood up. Didn't he speak?
Yes, he spoke in the first half.
Not the second half? Sorry. Go ahead.
Wants everyone to use their voice to say?
I'm sorry, go ahead and speak.
I think...
I'm sorry, you spoke in the beginning, you can't speak in the end.
Okay.
I saw you speak one other time, so excuse me. Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom?
Yes, Rosebud, please go ahead. Just one moment while I unmute you.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I just had one little thing to say, and that is, I recently had an opportunity to go to Washington, DC. And while I was there, I heard a speaker, his name was Masam Hassan Youssef. He, he is the son of Hamas. He wrote a book called Son of Hamas. He's, he's, he's Palestinian, he's, he's the son of the, one of the founders of Hamas. Anyway, it was really interesting because what he was trying to do is convince Americans who have zero connection to Palestine that what Hamas did, did and does is undeniably wrong, and that he is making it very clear that Palestinians don't need outsiders lecturing or telling other people what is good for our people. And so I would like to say that when even Palestinians from Palestine are telling you to stay in your lane, it's kind of clear that the performative activism has reached peak, I don't know, cultishness. This is the new Occupy Wall Street, or stop GMOs, or whatever, the new trend to be an activist if you don't have a life. And I really wish people would step down, step back. This is Arcata, let's worry about the otters getting across the street without getting hit by a car. Let's worry about buses to Bayside. Let's stay in our lane, as Masam Hassan Youssef said, a real Palestinian from Palestine. That's all I got to say. Okay.
Thank you. Is there another person on Zoom?
Yes, Gigi, please go ahead.
Hi. At first, I am going to go ahead and finish the incredible Pam Brown's speech that she wrote that she was cut off from. She was, I believe, the first speaker tonight. She says, "I ask you to take in the reality that where we live does include Palestinians and on their behalf or because of our inherent humanity as a city to have more than a superficial conversation about helping. Figure out how we, as a city, can support and help them, whether it's being open to explore a sister city, support a permanent ceasefire, condemn the Israeli government for the genocide, divest of any funds with Israeli ties, or some other bold step. As far as endorsing a sister city, Tromso, Norway, Muscatine, Iowa, Boulder, Colorado, and other cities have done this. Grant us permission to explore this. Place it on your agenda for every meeting through winter. Demonstrate that you do, in fact, understand that you also serve the Palestinian community living here, that their lives matter." I'm so appreciative of Pam, who is an incredible human and a former professor of social work at Cal Poly Humboldt, formerly Hsu, for her words and her activism. And I also just want to speak to this idea that's been brought up this evening that I've heard several times now by speakers who actually, you know, are in support of a sister city that, that, you know, we, we need to do this so that, you know, Palestinians, so that freedom fighters, so that people in Gaza don't hate us. We have to do this to show them, you know, we have to fight their hate with, with this act of kindness of creating a sister city. And I, and I refute that. I have never met a Palestinian or spoken to a Palestinian from Palestine or in the diaspora who hates all Americans. I think that's a really, that's a, that's a very Fox News take, and, and I reject that categorically. If, if anything, I see nothing but a deep love that goes, that is, is circular between the American people, the citizens here who are advocating on behalf of Palestinian rights and the Palestinian people. There is solidarity, there is a mutual hope for liberation, for human rights to be...
Thank you so very much for your comments.
Jamila, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. And yeah, I'd just like to, in whatever way that I can continue on in this thread of just what Gigi and others have said, and I'd just like us all to reflect on the fact that how pretty much the majority, I think actually almost every single person that spoke tonight, is speaking about Palestine. And I'm speaking to you as a Palestinian, as a Palestinian whose family comes from Gaza, who is actually being genocided right now at this time. And so I'd just like us, for all of us, to just sit with the fact that this is the conversation that we, as your constituents, not only want, but need to be having, because we can recognize and acknowledge that intersectional issues are very much the nature of anything that we're going to, we're going to be talking about in these spaces. There's no such thing as Palestine is there or Congo is there. It's implicated here in our daily lives. And so we need to be normalizing that and be confronted with that uncomfortable reality that we have to be having those conversations in this space. And so I would just like to say, for example, there's a toolkit that you can go to from USPCR, which is United Campaign for Palestinian Human Rights, that tracks the amount of money that we are sending to Israel to commit a genocide. So for example, in Arcata, we're currently, taxpayers are spending $259,067. We're giving that to Israel. For example, that could fund public housing for 30 households. It could fund 90 children receiving free or low-cost healthcare, two elementary school teachers' salaries, 737 households with solar electricity, six students with their loan debt canceled, 227,276 N95 respirator masks. So I'd just like for us to just sit with that and to realize like that we're totally implicated in what this conversation is on an international level and how it's implicating us on this very small level that we're communicating with each other, that we're meeting each other at in this small city of Arcata. It's, we are being manufactured to think that we don't have a connection to these broader issues, and that is a farce. That is actually by design. And so I just would like for city council members, every single one of you, to sit with the reality that like until you acknowledge this publicly, we're going to keep asking you to...
Thank you very much for calling in. And do you have anybody, more people? How many more people do you have on Zoom? Can you tell?
I see three hands raised.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Alice, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you and we can see.
Thank you. I just wanted to start off by addressing the fact that Palestinians do not hate us. I was on the phone today and video with Mohammed, who is 18 years old and who is in Gaza with his mother and father and three siblings. And we have been working together to raise money for him and his family to eat and to buy a new tent and winter clothes. And none of his family speaks English, and I don't speak Arabic, but we were able to communicate because we could see each other's faces, and there are a few words that we both know. So I know that Jamil is beautiful, and I could tell his family members that the names of them were Jamil. And I was able to show them the signs that we have been creating when we have our protests. I showed them every sign, and they were so happy. They said, "Beautiful, oh, wow, thank you, we love you." So the English that they know is love. "We love you, I love you" was said over and over and over. And that's because they could see that I supported them and that we, as a community, support them. So I really want us to know that Palestinians love us. I get that all the time with every interaction. And the reason that they love us is because they can see that we support them. So I hadn't planned on saying that tonight. I had something else completely planned, but I think that that's really important for us all to hear. And another thing that I want us all to know that's really important is the way that the city council is listening to and seeing their constituents. So two meetings ago, Mayor Stillman, you wanted us to come in face to face. And last meeting, when I came in face to face to speak with you, you didn't even look at me. And when other constituents were speaking, at the end of the meeting, you told Kim White that you really wished you had your computer so that you could scroll through while we were all talking. So I want city councilors to be in their positions, doing their job, and listening to us. I don't want to have to request that you be deposed from your voted-on position. I want you there rooting for us and doing...
So thank you very much for your comments. And our next speaker, please.
Sheri, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry. I apologize that my comments have nothing to do with city business. If the Sister City group continues to proceed with their request for sister city status with Gaza City, I hope they check with the State Department sooner than later. There is no government in Gaza other than Hamas, which is, again, a federally recognized terror organization. Their suggested donations to Hamas are likely illegal. Also, if you use the city of Boulder as an example, you will need to choose an Israeli sister city as well. I suggest Kibbutz Berry, which was destroyed on October 7 by Hamas and innocent Palestinian civilians in violation of the ceasefire that was in effect on October 6. Also, you know what is under Gaza? Tunnels. Instead of building an economy for everyone, Hamas built a tunnel system larger than the London Underground, not to shelter their civilians, but to shelter Hamas. And the hostages are still there, by the way. Where do these tunnels open up into? Inside children's bedrooms, inside hospitals. Hamas servers in the tunnels were powered by the UN, by UNRWA specifically. So I suggest we should care for the Palestinian civilians by freeing them from Hamas terror. So to bring this locally, when Siemens Hall is vandalized and renamed Intifada Hall, when globalized the Intifada is chanted, it encourages escalation. About one or two weeks ago, two little boys ages five and six were shot in Feather River at their school by a man whose note stated that he was deploying a countermeasure involving child executions in response to, quote, "America's involvement with genocide and oppression of Palestinians, along with attacks toward Yemen." I suggest we free Palestinian civilians from Hamas terror and free the city council meetings from items that have nothing to do with city business. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker, please.
Tamara, please go ahead. Tamara, looks like you might be muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. I wanted to continue with Sheri, I believe, let's talk. As I believe, since 2006, Gazan people democratically elected Hamas. This is a leadership that elected Hamas. I don't believe that a city in the United States, and I'm an American citizen, to all of the people that always wonder, who I am? I'm Israeli citizen, but I'm an American citizen. I don't think that American government should support terror organization that by federal recognize as a terror organization. I don't think that all the Gazan people are terrorists. I don't think that all the Gazan people are terrorists. I have beautiful friends that are Palestinian. But when Gazan people are going to elect not a terror organization that call and kill my own people, I have no problem to support them. But now this is not the point. And right now, it's like to bring the hostages back and to end this horrible war. That's all what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Three more hands raised since I last gave you an update. Jacob, please go ahead. I'm sorry, the two hands went down. So the next speaker is Ellen, please go ahead.
Hi. I was not planning on calling in tonight because I have my own issues to deal with, but I did tune into the livestream to hear the public comment. And unfortunately, I had to hear Zionists and other ignorant, bigoted people speak. And so I need to address that. Everyone needs to be reminded, apparently, at every meeting, that we have Palestinians living in Arcata. They are my friends. They pay taxes, they shop in your stores. Okay, so this is not some far-across-the-sea issue. Zionists are allowed to call in and spew Hasbara propaganda, anything that you can look up yourself, go read Hamas's charter, go read about how there hasn't been an election in so many years that most of the people living in Gaza were not of voting age at the time. I mean, this is just absurd. After 14 months of genocide, and we're still listening to this nonsense, these lies, and we're still trying to say, "Oh, it doesn't matter to us here in Arcata." We live here. Our taxes are going to incinerate families in tents in the desert with our bombs. Yes, this matters to Arcata. And yes, Alex, I did also hear you complain about having to listen to public comment. And in fact, I had planned to change my profile picture so you could see deposed with your mugshot up there because why are you doing this job if you hate it? You hate hearing from the public. We all knew this. We could tell, you know, from your reactions or your non-reactions to what we're saying. And now we have it on record. Everyone, go look at the last city council meeting, the recording. Go about to 20 seconds till the end. You will hear this statement from Alex. Alex Stillman hates hearing from the public, and yet somehow she is still in this job. What are you doing? Why are you doing this? Why do you hate listening to the public? All of us have spoken about Palestine tonight, and you continue to ignore us. Of course we're angry. Of course we're going to keep bugging you. Listen to us. Speak up against the hate that these Zionists spew in this chamber. These are not difficult things for you to do, and we will keep asking you to do them. Or you can step down.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Remira, please go ahead.
Hi. First, I just wanted to address the white supremacists that have spoken today, Pamar and Sheri. It's really uncomfortable hearing them not have any sympathy towards a nation suffering ethnic cleansing and genocide. But that is no surprise because her and...
Yeah, we can't actually talk about people like that. It's like a personal attack. So if you just want to have your comments, you can. But please don't address names in this, in your public comment right now. So would you like to continue?
Yeah, I will continue. So yeah, anyway, people that dance next to concentration camps with no rhythm are, I have no sympathy for them. And anyway, so today, I just wanted to say that this is why it's really important to address anti-Palestinian racism in our community. And I'm also in support for a Palestinian sister city. But Palestinian members in our community have expressed that it is not safe for them to be members of this community. And so if we want to build a bridge with Palestine, it's really important for our council members and our public to educate themselves on anti-Palestinian racism so we could be in better solidarity with our Palestinian community members. And so with that being said, I'd like to offer you a copy of The Hundred Years' War on Palestine, Mayor Stillman, if you would verbally confirm that you would accept it so that we can begin diving into an indigenous struggle against colonialism that has been occurring for over 100 years. And next meeting, in future meetings, I will be going over the summary for each chapter at a time, and you can read along with me.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. And next speaker, please.
There are no other hands raised.
Did you say there are no more speakers?
Yeah, I don't see anybody raising their...
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. I figured there was somebody else left. So at this time, we're actually going to be adjourned, and our next meeting will be January 15. And I hope everyone enjoys the time between now and then. So whatever kind of holidays or life you want to live, or places you're going to go, or friends you're going to see, so enjoy. We're adjourned. Thank you.